Good morning. Today is July 4, 2022. Regular session of the Sangguyan Bayan of Santa Ilocusur. Before we start with our regular session, like to remind everyone to please put on your masks, put your phones in silent mode so as not to disrupt the proceedings of this regular session. This session is called to order. Sangguyan Bayan member Eugene Borja will lead us in a prayer.
Stand and bow our head. The Father and the Son, Holy Spirit. Almighty and loving Father, Creator of heaven and earth, we praise you and adore you. You are the kings of kings. We humbly ask your forgiveness for our sins. Have mercy on us, oh Lord. We are gathered here today for our session. Send us your Holy Spirit to be our guide and give us the wisdom to understand every topic or measures that we are going to discuss. Enlighten our minds and let your love be upon us. May this session bring success and growth to our town. We thank you, Father, for this precious time that you have given us. All this we pray through our Lord Jesus Christ, your son who lives and reigns with you in the unity of the Holy Spirit. One God forever. Amen.
Panunupan ang katapatan sa watawat ng Pilipinas. Ako ay Pilipino. Buong katapatan nanunupak sa watawat ng Pilipinas at sa bansang kanyang sinasagisa na may dangal, katarungan at kalayaan na pinakikilos ng sampay ng mga Diyos, kakalikasan, makatao at makabansan.
The secretary will call the roll.
Honorable Eugene B. Borja.
Present.
Honorable Clay Benedict P. Formoso.
Present.
Honorable Domingo El Rituwa.
Present.
Honorable Encarnita V. Dela Cueva.
Present.
Honorable David A. Viado.
Present.
Honorable Benedicto A. Borgonio.
Present, Madam Secretary.
Honorable Poriso M. P. Biliones. Honorable Mariano P. Upi Jr. Honorable Persival T. Corazon. Honorable Justin Teia Benio Mellegre.
Present.
All regular members and ex officia members of this Sangguyan Bayan are present. We can proceed with our regular session. First is the reading and approval of the minutes of the previous session. We have two minutes to approve. The first one was the last regular session dated June 27, 2022. The second, the minutes pertaining to the inaugural session conducted last June 30, 2022. What's the pleasure of the Sangguyan Bayan?
Mr. Presiding Officer.
Sangguyan Bayan member. Ah, daligan ng barangay president is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. May I move for the approval of the previous minutes dated June 27, 2022 and the inaugural session dated June 30, 2022 at 12:04 in the afternoon without correction, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Do I hear a second?
Motion, Mr. President.
Motion you responded. The two minutes of the two mentioned regular and inaugural sessions are hereby adopted and approved. Next, we go to the privilege hour. Do you have any member of the Sangguyan Bayan who would like to take the floor to raise a matter of privilege?
Mr. Presiding Officer.
Sangguyan Bayan member Borja, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. A pleasant morning to one and all. I am both humbled and honored that you have placed your trust and support in me when electing me as one of the members of this Sangguyan Bayan. I feel blessed as I begin this new term. I would like to thank my family and friends for their unending love and support. But mostly, I thank God. It is with him that I will continue to serve the people. I want to thank every Santanyan who participated last election, who trusted me and put their faith in me. All of you are family to me now. You are the reason that I felt confident to be able to discharge my duties and responsibilities. Also, I would like to express my heartfelt thanks to Team Bueno and to all who supported during the campaign. A big thanks to all of you. To all my fellow elected officials, we all have to work together as a team for the progress of our municipality. Thank you once again.
Thank you very much, Sangguyan Bayan member Borja. Do we have any other members of the Sangguyan Bayan who would like to take the floor to raise a matter of privilege?
Mr. Presiding Officer.
Sangguyan Bayan member Dela Cueva, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. First and foremost, I would like to thank our omnipotent Lord for all the blessings he bestowed upon this humble representation. I believe I have the mission to continue serving our constituents. To my family, my mom, my sister, brothers and sisters-in-law, thank you so much for all the support and love in everything, especially for my political career. To my partner Vanji, thank you so much for your love and sacrifices during the hard moments of the campaign. To my relatives and friends who are there and sacrifice a lot for this victory, thank you so much. And to my constituents who gave their full trust, thank you so much for all the love and support to this humble servant. As my mission continues, serving, working and helping you all, my dear constituents, rest assured that I will do my part as a public servant for the welfare and benefit of the whole citizenry. Public service above self, just like Nina Kakailean, this humble representation. Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Thank you very much, Sangguyan Bayan member Dela Cueva. Anyone else? We are at the privilege hour. Hearing none, we proceed then. Madam Secretary, we can start with the referrals. First reading and referral to the committee's concern of proposed ordinances, resolutions, communications, petitions, messages and memorials. First item, Madam Secretary.
A resolution approving the MDC Resolution Number 4 Series of 2002 entitled, "A Resolution Realigning the Unutilized or Unexpended Balance of RA 7171 Municipal Share for Calendar Year 2015 Amounting to 8,560,252 pesos to Farmer Survival Fund in the Amount of 4 million pesos and to Agricultural Development and Protection Program, Stone Masonry, Deepening of Waterways, Opening or Concreting of Farm-to-Market Road in the Amount of 4,560,252, certified urgent by the Office of the Mayor."
We have the first item, certified urgent by the Office of the Mayor. This pertains to the resolution approving the Municipal Development Council Resolution Number 4 Series of 2022, the realignment of the unexpended balance of RA 7171 for the purposes of funding the Farmer Survival Fund in the amount of 4 million pesos and the Agricultural Development and Protection Program. For the information of the body, we expressed our concern to the municipal mayor that because of the COVID, because of this pandemic, most of our available funds were appropriated for relevant PPAs to immediately respond to the needs of our citizens. And as such, our 5% Local Calamity Fund and the other sources of funds which may be utilized or which may be needed in case of a strong typhoon affecting the municipality are already depleted. So, no adas sumang pwet nga bagyo, tin inaulaw ka kunan po mayor, awan iti mabaling nga pangalaan tayong tin sigida nga pangayuda, kadagit i mapektaran nga manlalon ken mangalap. So kasanu da nga maka subli, bueno, kasanu da nga makarugi, no awan nga rod itinan anay. So I would like to thank the municipal mayor for considering our manifestation. So that's the reason why the Municipal Development Council approved the realignment of the 4 million for the Farmer Survival Fund and the Agricultural Development and Protection Program. This matter being certified urgent by the Office of the Mayor, I will still refer this to the Committee on Appropriation. Next item, Madam Secretary.
A resolution earnestly requesting the Second District of Ilocusur representative, Honorable Congresswoman Christine Singzon Mihan to cost the allocation of 5 million pesos for the rehabilitation of Palupias Road located at Barangay Kalumbuyan, Santa Ilocusur, authored by Sangguyan Bayan member Clay Benedict P. Formoso.
This is a request resolution addressed to the Honorable Congresswoman Christine Singzon Mihan. The matter shall be referred to the Committee on Infrastructure.
Mr. Presiding Officer.
Sangguyan Bayan member Formoso, you are recognized.
For the information of this august body and to all our viewers, the Palupias Road had shown signs of deterioration due to the normal wear and tear of the materials used in the construction. Moreover, the devastating effects of unforeseen natural calamities or disasters such as storm surges, the pounding of waves heavy down for a rainstorm and constant flooding in the area makes said road impassable and the island barangays isolated. I personally consulted the municipal engineer regarding the cost for the rehabilitation or even replacement of the said road and he responded with an estimated cost of 5 million pesos. And with that, Mr. Presiding Officer, may I respectfully move for the immediate approval of the proposed measure without going through the usual legislative process?
I second the motion, Mr. Presiding Officer.
I will have to make the referral because we had an agreement before this new Sangguyan Bayan session started that all motions for the immediate approval of the request resolution will be properly discussed in the next part of our session. Likewise, similarly to what I did to the resolution certified urgent by the Office of the Mayor. So noted, Sangguyan Bayan member Formoso, the matter shall be referred to the Committee on Infrastructure. Sangguyan Bayan member Rito.
Noted, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Sangguyan Bayan member Umpig, you were raising your hand. Can you check your microphone, please?
I strongly recommend to cut streetlights at the said location.
That's a subject of a separate resolution, Sangguyan Bayan Umpig. Remember, it's basic that in one proposed measure, there should be only one topic or one subject. So if you, the purpose is noble and if you intend to make a resolution to support that request, kindly prepare the resolution and we will properly refer it to the committee concerned. But well noted. Next item, Madam Secretary.
A resolution earnestly requesting the Honorable Governor Jeremias Jerry C. Singzon to cost the allocation of 5 million pesos for the rehabilitation of Palupias Road located at Barangay Kalumbuyan, Santa Ilocusur.
Same matter shall be referred to the Committee on Infrastructure.
Noted, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Next.
A resolution earnestly requesting Honorable Christine Singzon Mihan, Congresswoman, Second District of Ilocusur for the financial assistance from RA 7171 to fund the construction of two-story building with four classrooms for the Santa National High School at Marcos District, Santa Ilocusur.
The matter shall be referred to the Committee on Infrastructure.
Noted, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Next.
A resolution earnestly requesting Honorable Christine Singzon Mihan, Congresswoman, Second District of Ilocusur for the financial assistance from RA 7171 to fund the construction of basketball-covered court at the Santa National High School or Santa Central School, Santa Ilocusur.
The matter shall be referred to the Committee on Infrastructure.
Noted, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Yes, Sangguyan Bayan Rito. Okay, to give time to the committees to discuss among themselves, no? The proposed measures referred to their respective committees, especially the proposed measure certified urgent by the Office of the Mayor, I am declaring a five-minute break. Yes, Sangguyan Bayan Dela Cueva?
Mr. Presiding Officer, we still have one item left, Mr. Presiding Officer, in our first reading.
Do we have any other items that for first reading?
Yes, sir. It's letter F, sir. A resolution earnestly requesting Honorable Christine Singzon Mihan, Congresswoman, Second District of Ilocusur for financial assistance from RA 7171 fund for the construction of multi-purpose hall at Mabilbila Integrated School, Mabilbila Norte, Santa Ilocusur.
The matter shall be referred to the Committee on Infrastructure. Five-minute break.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. Person appropriation.
It was a very long five minutes and I'm happy to witness that even during the committee hearings, the members of this Sangguyan Bayan are very active. Okay, we resume our session. We proceed then to the presentation of committee reports. We have two items under our agenda. First pertains to the administrative complaint filed by Ms. Harantilia against Kagawad Ford Dameg of Barangay Cason. Do we have a report on this, Sangunian Bayan Member De La Cueva?
Thank you, sir. This humble representation would like to make a manifestation, Mr. Presiding Officer. During the setup of councilors as vice chairman on Committee on Rules, Privileges, Ordinances and Legalese Matters, Good Governance, Public Ethics and Accountability with the chairmanship of former SBM Marina Borgos, this representation accepted responsibility with regards to the administrative complaint filed to this office by Elvira Harantilia against Kagawad Ford Dameg, both residents of Barangay Cason. The committee waited for fifteen days from receipt of the notice of the respondent to file his verified answer with the copies of the witnesses and other supporting documents. But unfortunately, no answer was forwarded to this office. So I believe he waived his right to present evidences in his behalf, Mr. Presiding Officer. The committee shall commence the investigation, Mr. Presiding Officer. And I believe that, and may I then move then, that this administrative case filed to this office be referred to the concerned committee of the new set of councilors, Mr. Presiding Officer. Thank you, sir.
Okay, that's, can you put that in black and white? So that it can form part of the records of this Sangunian Bayan. So as a result of the non-compliance of Barangay Kagawad Dameg to file his verified answer, it is now the duty of the committee of the Sangunian Bayan to continue with the proceeding, to continue with the investigation. If there is a probable cause to proceed with the filing or yeah, the trial, the hearing of the case. So your, I believe your, who's the new chairman, chairperson of the committee on?
SBM Honorable Benedicto Borgonio, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Okay, since Sangunian Bayan Member Borgonio is the new chairperson of the committee on Good Governance, Public Ethics and Accountability, what's your position on this, sir?
I have the floor, Mr. Presiding Officer.
You are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. At this juncture, currently assigned the chair of the committee on good governance, may I request, Mr. Presiding Officer, to constitute a committee of the whole in the investigation of the case, of the complaint, Mr. Presiding Officer.
I will take that as a motion, Sangunian Bayan Member Borgonio. There is a motion from Sangunian Bayan Member Borgonio to constitute a committee of the whole for the purposes of handling the administrative complaint filed against Mr. Ford Dameg. Do I hear a second?
I second, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, the motion is approved.
Mr. Presiding Officer?
Sangunian Bayan Member Borgonio.
Furthermore, Mr. Presiding Officer, may I move also to shift the proceedings of the investigation and to adopt the civil service laws, rules and regulations of the administrative complaint, Mr. Presiding Officer.
There is a motion from Sangunian Bayan Member Borgonio to adopt the rules, the rules followed under the civil service proceedings in the trial or the hearing of administrative cases. Do I hear a second? Any other discussion? Hearing none, the motion is approved.
Mr. Presiding Officer?
Yes, Sangunian Bayan Member Borgonio.
May this representation be guided if it is mandatory to conduct a pre-hearing conference as to this case while the complainant, complaint person did not reply to the summon issued by the, this office, Mr. Presiding Officer.
It is the chair's position that there is no need to conduct a pre-hearing if we're going to base, if I'm going to base on the provisions of the Local Government Code, that the committee concerned, the Sangunian Bayan committee concerned must conduct, shall conduct the investigation ten days upon receipt of the verified answer. That's the purpose of the committee level investigation, to determine whether there is a cause, let's say probable cause, to continue with the administrative hearing, with the administrative case.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Okay.
So may I then request the committee of the whole to commence on Wednesday, July 6, 2022, at 9:00 AM to tackle the administrative complaint, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Okay. Members of the Sangunian Bayan, since the committee of the whole was constituted for the purpose of handling the administrative case, can you take note of the day and the time when the committee will convene? Okay. Any other committee reports to be presented today? We have one item. This pertains to the request of Engineer Castañeda for a resolution endorsing his application for the extraction of gravel and boulder in his parcel of land at Barasibis, Mabilbila Sur, Santaylo, Kusur.
I have the floor, Mr. Presiding.
Sangunian Bayan Borgonio, you are recognized.
Mr. Presiding Officer, the Sangunian Bayan office has yet to receive a resolution from Barangay Mabilbila Sur to this effect. Hence, a motion to further lay on the table the proposed measure, Mr. Presiding Officer.
I second the motion, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, the motion of Sangunian Bayan Member Borgonio to lay on the table, item letter B is hereby approved.
On its second reading, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Thank you, noted. So any other committee reports to be presented today? Sangunian Bayan Member Borre, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. During our recess, Mr. Presiding Officer, the committee on appropriation convened a committee hearing. The committee members and also the SB members attended the MDC meeting last week. And all who attended the meeting approved the said realignment of the RA 7171 fund for the calendar year 2015. Since this is certified urgent, Mr. Presiding Officer, so the committee on appropriation recommends for the adoption of this committee report and the proposed measure to be calendared for its second reading, Mr. Presiding Officer, submitted by committee on appropriations.
Second motion, Mr. Presiding.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that, no. There is a motion from Sangunian Bayan Member Borre to adopt and approve the committee report and that the proposed measure be approved.
Calendared for.
Be calendared for its second reading. And it was duly seconded by Sangunian Bayan Member Borgonio. Any other discussion? Hearing none, the motion is approved. Any other committee reports?
Mr. Presiding Officer, may I have the floor?
Sangunian Bayan Member Rituwa.
Actually, Mr. Presiding Officer, the proposed measure referred by the committee, item B, C, D, E and F, the committee convened a committee hearing regarding this proposed measure. The intent of the proposed measures are very beneficial, Mr. Presiding Officer. So, Mr. Presiding Officer, I move to adopt the committee report for approval and the proposed measure to be calendared for second reading, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Do I hear a second?
I second, Mr. Presiding Officer.
The motion you listed, the motion of Sangunian Bayan Member Rituwa to adopt and approve the committee reports and the four items, the four measures referred to his committee be calendared for second reading. Okay, I think I knocked my gavel so hard, the batteries of a microphone fell. Any other committee reports to be presented today? Madam Secretary?
No more, sir.
No more? The committee chairpersons, no more? Okay, we now proceed then to our calendar business. First unfinished business. Items for second reading.
Business for the day, sir.
Ah?
It should be under the business of the, for the day, sir. It should be under the business for the day, sir. The item is calendared for the second reading.
Okay, business for the day. Sangunian Bayan Member Borre, you are recognized.
Mr. Presiding Officer. The table of this the proponent, Mr. Presiding Officer, of this proposed measure is now open. There's no objection, Mr. Presiding Officer? I move that the proposed measure to be approved in its second reading and be calendared for its to be approved in its second reading without passing in its third and final reading, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Do I hear a second?
Second motion, Mr. Presiding.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. The item certified urgent by the office of the mayor pertaining to the adoption of MDC Resolution Number 4, Series of 2022, realigning the amount of eight million five hundred sixty-two thousand two hundred fifty-two pesos for, realigned to the Farmer Survival Fund for the amount of four million pesos and to the Agricultural Development Protection Program, the amount of four million five hundred sixty-two two hundred fifty-two pesos is hereby approved. Next, Sangunian Bayan Member Rituwa.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. If there's no more objection of the proposed measure, calendared for second reading, Mr. Presiding Officer. So, Mr. Presiding Officer, if there's no more objection, item number V, C, D, E, F. So therefore, Mr. Presiding Officer, I move for the approval of the proposed measure for its, for approval for second reading without passing the third and final reading, Mr. Presiding Officer.
There is a motion from Sangunian Bayan Member Rituwa for the immediate passage of the request resolution for the Palupias Road, letters B, C, and for the financial assistance for the construction of a four-classroom building at the Santa National High School, letters D, E, F. Do I hear a second?
I second, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Pinagkisanan natin lahat, no? Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, the motion is approved. Sige. Any other items for consideration of the Sangunian Bayan, Madam Secretary? No more? We now proceed then to the third reading of the proposed measure authored by yours truly. Sangunian Bayan Member Borre, you may proceed.
Mr. Presiding Officer. Today is the third reading of the proposed ordinance. And I move for the approval of this, oh, title of this ordinance, Mr. Presiding Officer, with amendment. Mr. Presiding Officer?
Oh, okay. I will, so as not to inconvenience myself going down, I'll just provide you a copy of the proposed amendment of the title, Sangunian Bayan Member Borre. During the second reading, I manifested my intent to amend the title, but it was recommended then by the temporary presiding officer, Sangunian Bayan Member Bellabello, that it should be properly done during the third hearing. So I'm forwarding the proposed amendment of the title to you.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. I'm humbled to read the amended title of this ordinance. Unordinance establishing the IBP Locusor and LGU Santa Legal Assistance Program, providing the mechanisms and guidelines for its implementation appropriating funds thereof and for other purposes. Mr. Presiding Officer, if there's no objection from my dear colleagues, I move for the approval of the said ordinance, Mr. Presiding Officer, with amendment.
There is a motion from Sangunian Bayan Member Borre to approve in its third and final reading the proposed measure with the amendments, especially on the title and section six of the proposed measure. Do I hear a second?
Second motion, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Any other discussion? By show of hands, those who approve the passage of the proposed measure, Madam Secretary, take note that all members of this Sangunian Bayan raised their hands, signifying their approval to the passage of the proposed measure. The motion is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Next. Do we have any other items for consideration of the Sangunian Bayan, Madam Secretary?
No more, sir.
No more? Any announcements from the members of this Sangunian Bayan? Sangunian, the PPSK president is recognized.
Sir, may I announce that the Santianian Youth Initiative's final screening will be this afternoon, 1:00 PM here at SB Hall?
Noted, PPSK Justine? Yes. They, and I think the PPS, the PPSK also requested that the that the final event of the Santianian Initiative will be conducted here at the Sangunian Bayan Hall, which I already approved and allowed. And likewise, they requested that it should be livestreamed. So we'll be sharing our equipments and our page to them for the live streaming of the Santianian Youth Initiative. I was able to read some of the proposals, but unfortunately because of poor eyesight, and I cannot really decipher the, some of the letters because it was, I think, script. So I cannot really read some of the, the words on the post. But I'm really excited, no, to hear the proposals, the programs being being recommended by the various teams. And from what I was able to read, I already have one or two likely candidates, likely candidates, but I will not mention them. Of course, it will all depend on how they present because I still have some questions for them on how, especially on how they will implement those programs, no? So I invite everyone to listen, watch, probably come and join us this afternoon here at the Sangunian Bayan Hall. So I think the, the, the committee will open the floor to any questions from the guests, no? So, yun. So do we have any other announcements?
Sir.
Mr. Presiding Officer. The Liganang Barangay President is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. For information of this August body, Mr. Presiding Officer, I would like to read my members.
I would like to read my members on the Committee on Barangay Apers, Vice Chairman SBM Eugen Borre, members SBM Clay Benedict Formoso, PPSK Justine Taya Melagrito and SBM Domingo Ritoa. In the Committee on Disaster Risk Reduction and Management, Vice Chair SBM Clay Benedict Formoso, members SBM Domingo Ritoa, SBM Benedicto Borgonio and SBM Eugen Borre. That's all, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Thank you. Ligan ng barangay president, anymore?
Sir.
So, the secretary, sir, recognize.
I would like, sir, to respectfully remind the members of the Sangunian to submit the following to the SB Secretariat. First, notarized certificate of candidacy, personal data sheet, statement of contributions and expenditures, out of office and certificate of proclamation. I only have the copies of SBM Borre, sir. The rest...
But you made a certification during the inaugural session, Madam Secretary, that all the required documents are already, were already in your possession?
The rest is incomplete, sir.
Ah, okay, okay.
They still have to complete the documents.
Okay, noted then.
Mr. Presiding Officer?
Yes, Sangunian Bayan Member de la Cueva?
May I request my colleagues in this august body that will provide copies to our SB Secretary with regards to our standing committees, the vice chairman and our members because this will be included in our IRP, Mr. Presiding Officer?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anymore? Sangunian Biado, done?
As a new member of this august body, Mr. Presiding Officer, may I request the good secretary to give us a copy of the IRP?
Noted. The Sangunian Bayan Secretary will provide. Do you need soft copies or hard copies, meaning do you need a digital copy or the printed copy? I recommend that we shift to digital copies, no? But if you're still old school, you can opt for the printed copy. But I believe the Sangunian Bayan procured laptops for the purposes of doing work so we can perhaps shift to a paperless Sangunian Bayan. Taplohan nga sayang di papel ngamin.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer.
I believe Sangunian David needs to learn how to, but he knows how to use Facebook, so it's easy also to read and download the items, no? That's why every time the secretary sends the order of business to me, I forward it to our chat group. Mabas-basa yumet lang, no, kasi ay? Okay, so at least amute amino ka. But later, masusuro tay amin dyan niya, para tinanong niya. Sayang amin di papel. Sayang amin di papel.
Paboritser nga, dako mamit laptop ni nga baruh nga, member Sangunian.
Yes.
Thank you, sir, thank you.
Okay, anymore announcements?
Mr. Presiding Officer.
Sangunian Bayan Member Umi Ping, you are recognized.
Mr. Presiding Officer, dito national highway tayo, kanoa yu nanti desgracia. Nga pati na tay, nasaya at mararami takno, may katangbasit desgracia, sir, tanok.
As the chairperson of the Committee on Transportation, I recommend that you coordinate with the Committee on Public Order so you can properly perhaps discuss it with the concerned agencies and departments in the municipality. I commiserate with the family of Mang Francis, no? Amamuk di palayo ngamin. With what happened yesterday. So, it's better that you discuss your proposal or you look at the problem together with the other members of the concerned agencies. I read a post that the concerned local agency should impose more guidelines, more rules. But I believe we have sufficient rules and guidelines already from the national down to the local. So it takes proper implementation in the barangay, it takes proper implementation from the PNP and it takes some discipline on our part to comply with those rules and guidelines. Because if we continue passing more ordinances without full implementation of those ordinances, it's useless. It's just a scrap of paper. So, it's better for us to discuss and meet it, meet with the members of the other agencies expected to implement the national laws and the local ordinances so we can properly respond or identify what's the root cause of the constant vehicular accidents in the national highway of Santa Illocusur. So, thank you. Any more announcements or manifestations? Hearing none, if there are no more items left, since there are no more items left in today's agenda, if there is no objection, I would like to declare this session adjourned. Have a great week ahead. This session is adjourned.